All right, welcome to this evening's work, not work session, but regular business meeting. We will have our invocation by Pastor Gary Anderson and New Macedonia Church in Riverdale. It will be followed by our Veteran of the Month, Retired Sergeant Leslie R. Cotton-Williams. If you would, please stand with me.
There you go. How you doing?
Let us all bow our heads. Father in heaven, we do come this evening to say thank you and thank you for another gracious time that you allowed us as your people to come together. We pray, Father, for our commissioners, we pray for our chairman, we pray, Father, for those who are here today, and we pray for each person on the sound of my voice. We pray for your blessing upon them. Bless this meeting with your wisdom and your knowledge. Protect us and watch over us even as we are here today. God, we give you praise and glory in Jesus' name, Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Sarge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Welcome to our September 3 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, there's two emergency items that need to be added to this agenda. I will have Staff Attorney, Mr. Reed, to clarify.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and Board Members. There's actually three items. Two of them are requests for emergency addition. First is Resolution 2024-216, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a parking holding agreement with North Center Productions Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which Clayton County property will be used for the purpose of parking and catering. There's actually two, Resolution 2024-216 and 2024-217, both the same title. They're relating to two parking agreements, one for the Spivey Splash Water Park and the other at 120 Smith Street. The reason why they're being brought as emergency items today is they are wishing to use those properties between September 6 through September 12. And so by the time it comes back to this board, it would have already been done. We could have waited till next week, but since we already can decide on that, you know, now we can get it approved if that's what the board's desire. And then the other issue is Resolution 2024-218. This is a resolution authorizing the Board of Commissioners to order the removal of Dr. Richard Wright from the Clayton County Board of Health. This is an item on your agenda for today. It was discussed at the agenda meeting, it just was not included in your agenda.
All right, I'm gonna make the motion to add all three of those items to the consent agenda as emergency items, based on the explanation that Staff Attorney Reed provided us. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Are there any others for the agenda?
Well, yes. Under board appointments for zoning, we received something that said, I think all of those were full board appointments, but they are not. They do go by district. So my recommendation is to at least hold the one that's for District 3.
Why is that?
We don't have anybody here for District 3.
But I cover District 3 as well. I'm capable of making a nomination.
Well, do we want to put it to a vote?
If you like.
Yeah, I'd like to put it to a vote and let whoever gets that district, you know.
Do you have somebody for that district?
I'm District 2.
Okay. So if I'm covering District 3, what's the issue or problem with me making that recommendation?
Because I think the person that voted in by the people of District 3 should be the person that would choose their board appointments.
Well, seeing how I was not going to, how I was going to reappoint Mr. Dante Longis on District 3 anyway, he will continue to serve in that capacity until 1st of the year or until District 3 is filled. So I guess I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, say that again.
The person who sits in that seat now, unless we remove him or reappoint somebody else, continues to serve until he is, he is either reappointed by District 3, according to what you want to do is wait for that District 3 Commissioner to come to place.
Okay, so when will, what's the date on what you're saying?
New Commissioner for special elections in November, so sometime in November.
Okay, as long as we do it, won't wait until 27, 2027 or anything?
No, we could have did it tonight, but I'm not opposed to that. So I'm not gonna go back and forth. If it's your recommendation that we not fill that, then we could.
I just think it's only fair.
I have a question. The individual, does he live in District 3?
Yes.
So District 3 will still have representation on the board?
Well, the...
No.
Well, sorry, on the, on the ZAD board?
No. That term expires on August 19. Yeah, but until it is removed or is filled by somebody else, they continue to serve. I think we still have to do the county's business and we need to be very careful about waiting to go on.
And that's fine, what Chairman said about let them serve until, until District 3 position is filled and let them make that decision if they want to keep that person or if they want to appoint somebody else. So, I mean, I agree with you about keeping until then, but not until 2027, you know. I think it's only fair.
No, that was never an option. That was never an option.
So how do we do that?
Well, when we get to that point, I'll just ask, or go ahead, Chuck.
So you could actually remove Item 31 because the way that the board appointments occur is that they automatically serve until they are appointed at a later time. So if you wanted to have the District 3 person remain until the seat is filled, you could just not bring it back until that seat is filled and he would stay in that seat until such time a new person came.
So basically, we just hold, just hold it and then not put it back on there until it comes back up.
That's correct.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Any others? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our next item is our presentation for our Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month is Retired Sergeant Leslie R. Cotton-Williams. Sergeant Leslie Williams was born in Brooklyn, New York on October 19, 1968, to Lester and Lillian Cotton. In June of 1986, Leslie graduated from Sheep's Head Bay High School, Brooklyn, New York, then joined the military in December of 1986. She served in the U.S. Air Force for six years at Shepherd Air Force Base and then McConnell Air Force Base in the 384th Comptroller Squadron in the Financial Management and Comptroller's Office as a financial management specialist. Post-military, Leslie worked for the Salvation Army Divisional Headquarters in Atlanta, Georgia, in the Finance Department, project share, and later retired honorably after 28 years of service from the Jonesboro, Georgia, location as the Finance Officer Manager. Leslie is a licensed real estate agent and life and health insurance producer. She's a numbers person and her passion is to give back and serve others. Leslie's a full-time member of Omicron Nucci Military Sorority, Inc., a member of the National Association of Black Military Women, Atlanta Metropolitan Chapter, Assistant Poll Manager for Clayton County Board of Elections, and a faithful servant at Shiloh Baptist Church, Jonesboro, where she serves as a Deaconess and a Financial Secretary. Leslie enjoys traveling and spending quality time with her family, especially her two precious granddaughters, Ayanna and Elena. Leslie is married to her childhood sweetheart, Scott, and they have four adult children, Chantia, Scott Jr., Briani, and Sierra. Leslie has been a Clayton County resident for 32 years and currently resides in Hampton, Georgia, District 4. Let's honor and recognize our Veteran of the Month, Retired Sergeant Leslie R. Cotton-Williams.
One, two, and three. Again, one, two, and three. Last time, one, two, and three. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our proclamation for National Preparedness Month by our Office of Resilience and Sustainability. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes National Preparedness Month. Whereas September is National Preparedness Month, the Offices of Emergency Management Services and Office of Resilience and Sustainability will be offering the residents of Clayton County free events to ensure the safety of their homes, businesses, and places of worship. And whereas a series of talks will be presented at the Clayton County Senior Centers on flood awareness and mitigation during September, seniors will have an opportunity to ask questions regarding flooding and receive a broad range of information. Residents can also obtain flood information from the Office of Resiliency's website or visit the headquarters library. And whereas the Office of Emergency Management Services has partnered with Georgia Emergency Management and Homeland Security Association to present the first-ever Atlanta Praise and Preparedness Summit on Thursday, September 12, 2024, at the Performing Arts Center in Marrow. GMA Director James Stalling and the other public safety professionals will share expertise with faith-based communities and the public at this free summit. And whereas during National Preparedness Month, let us strengthen our support for first responders, our first line of defense when catastrophes threaten our homes, businesses, schools, and families. Let us each recommit to doing our part to prepare for emergencies such as downloading the Code Red app, to receive real-time disaster alerts, and create emergency go-bags. Now therefore, I, Gilby Hambrik, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Clayton County National Preparedness Month. We encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of preparedness and work together to enhance our readiness. Together, we can be prepared for any disaster that lies ahead. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2024. Next on our agenda is our proclamation for September is National Senior Center Month. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 2024 as National Senior Center Month, whereas older Americans are significant members of the society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center, Sonal Singleton Gregory Senior Center, Flint River Community Center, and Kinship Care Resource Center have acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clayton County. And whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior and intergenerational centers empower older citizens of Clayton County to contribute to their health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center, Sonal Singleton Gregory Senior Center, Flint River Community Center, and Kinship Care Resource Center have a community partner ensuring that older adults in our community are able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas the three senior centers and two intergenerational centers in Clayton County affirm the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2024 National Senior Center Month. All citizens, please take this opportunity to recognize the special contributions of the senior and intergenerational center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens in our community. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2024.
Everybody can say it from the kitchen door until the go-bags.
Okay, well, pass me the other proclamation. It just makes more...
Our next proclamation is for National Kinship Care Month. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes September 2024 as National Kinship Care Month, whereas Clayton County is steadfast in its commitment to helping children strive in stable households that provide a nurturing and comforting environment, and whereas more than 2.4 million kinship care caregivers reside in the United States. In Georgia, more than 250,000 households are comprised of grandparents and other blood and non-blood relatives who have taken on the role of the primary caregiver due to unforeseen circumstances. And whereas kinship families in Clayton County have a valuable resource in the Kinship Care Resource Center, which provides information, referrals, tutoring, support groups, and a variety of services, programs, and activities for grandparents and relatives, caregivers, and more. And whereas Clayton County Senior Services is proud to recognize relatives, members of tribes and clans, and non-related extended family members who provide round-the-clock protection and nurturing for their young family members. And whereas kinship care services ensure better outcomes for the children in their care by keeping them out of the foster system and in safe homes with loved ones. And whereas solid and healthy family relationships are vital for the well-being of children, and it is our responsibility to promote and preserve kinship, sibling, and other household connections for the county's youngest citizens. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor and encourage all citizens to join and celebrate National Kinship Care Month. We urge everyone to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of kinship caregivers and the children they are raising in stable, loving, and nurturing homes. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2024.
Please, if y'all are gonna leave out, please leave out quietly.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Teresa Tally.
Truck drivers parking in Clayton County is out of control. They are allowed to park wherever they want to park with no worries of being ticketed or told. They are only given violations. Signs are posted everywhere stating no overnight parking. These drivers have shown our leaders who made decisions that they don't care what you do, you better not give me a ticket and you better not tell me. This is the behavior that the truck drivers are showing. Code enforcement is aware, the COO is aware, Chairman Turner is aware, and this is a nuisance that has been going on for many years. Terror Boulevard is a truck stop. They park wherever they want to park. It's out of control. They are ignoring their jobs, and I'm quite sure when they applied for their jobs, they were instructed to park in permitted parking with the fee. Our leaders have taken their frustration. I don't mean because I continue to bring it up, I continue to talk about it. I'm not the only one that see this mess, but I don't understand why we still dealing with it. They park behind grocery stores, they park on the side of Terror Boulevard, they park at the dealership, the Family Dollar, wherever they can park. It's just amazing that they park and they able to come back and their truck is still there. I wish I was a police officer for one day. My book would be full. I'm not giving out violations, I'm giving out that $750 ticket. Truck drivers talk. They talk. And all it take is that you all need to start giving them a healthy fine. We pay taxes in Clayton County. Chairman Turner, I feel like you've been avoiding me. I have requested three weeks ago to meet with you. I'm still waiting on the date. Thank you.
And we will have that meeting. Nobody, definitely is not avoiding you. I was too busy handling the other three issues that you had, that you requested of me that we did take care of or staff to make sure that they took care of.
Yeah, they, they emailed.
So let's give credit, let's give credit there as well, and also to point out, a lot of those areas that you said, they're parking on private property. It's a lot of times, or most of the time, it is up to the property owner to remove those vehicles that's illegally parked on some of their properties. So that adds into the problems.
So that mean the private property owners, if they are allowing this, then they need to be hit with two property taxes. You have a business and you got a truck stop.
I won't argue that fact.
So, I'm just saying.
It is governed, again, it's on private property, so that's not something that governs.
Where the private property owner need to be hit with a...
Code enforcement, code enforcement is addressing that though.
Just give me the job, one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Orlando Gooden.
Chairman, can I have these out?
Four members alone. Go ahead.
Okay. The names on here. Orlando Gooden, District 3, Clayton County. I received a letter August 21 from Cycle Works Attorney Andrew Edge. The letter states, "Your legal violations and demand to cease and desist from further defamatory conduct. It has come to Cycle Works' attention that you've been publicly issuing salacious and untrue defamatory allegations against Cycle Works. You publicly stated that a representative from Cycle Works informed you the company could not maintain a consistent monthly price. Neither of these allegations are true. First, you should be advised that Commissioner Anderson has never been in communication with anyone affiliated with, or representative of Cycle Works regarding pending RFPs, including one in question. Suffice it to say, your public comments at the Board of Commissioners' meeting satisfies each of the elements above and constitute unlawful defamatory comments. August 23, I spoke to Attorney Edge and advised him that I can justify my August 6 public comments. For the record, there are seven universal mandatory trash work sessions videos from March 2021 to January 2024. The dates and the agenda numbers are on here. I made six public comments, mandatory trash public comments, from February 2021 to November 2023. The video dates and the times are on here. At the August 6 Millet Ray hearing, I said $19 a month mandatory trash was not sustainable. That's why there is a $900,000 per year cost with a five-year, $4.5 million budget hit to the general fund. The attorney's letter was... The attorney's letter was based on August 6th. January 9th, Commissioner Franklin said about the RFP 2023-20 that any contact with a trash company was a violation. February 29th, an ethics complaint was filed with the date and time Commissioner Anderson made her comments. January 2nd, public comments, I said, "We were told we would get two choices, but we got none." For me and many residents in District Three, Cycle Works is our trash company. Why would I trash them if I wanted to keep them? For the record, I told Attorney Edge, "I consider this, his letter, a form of intimidation and a violation of my First Amendment right of freedom of speech." He told me, "Just make a clarification at the Board of Commissioners meeting," which is what I'm doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Maggie Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next legitimate speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Hammerick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hammerick for District Three. This weekend, we're gonna have a lot of visitors. We got company coming, folks. Seventy to ninety thousand people are gonna be here this weekend. It's the start of the NASCAR playoffs. I would like to ask our good friends at Transportation and Development to please extend on Saturday and Sunday evenings the north and southbound lights into extended greens so our visitors can get from Hampton, Georgia up to Interstate 75 and on their way home. What this also does is we are going to be on display. They're not gonna be watching us through a computer screen to look at this meeting. They are going to physically check into Clayton County to see how well they do business. They're gonna go to the gas stations, the restaurants, the various shopping centers. They will personally check out Clayton County to see if the county is in business to do business. When they drive down Terra Boulevard, they're gonna observe things that most of us take for granted. Usually, not everyone. Get in their vehicle, go to work, and are, and come home. And a lot of times on the journey to and from work, they're on their cellphone, distracted, not paying attention. What I'd really like you to look at is when you go down Clayton County, the objective is the grass cut? Are the buildings in good shape? Are they welcoming? Are the parking lots in good shape? Are they filled with trash? What do the front of the businesses look like? What do their parking lots look like? Does it look like an exploded trash can or junkyard sitting there? Think about it. Would you want to invest money into this county when you see this? The people are coming from all over the country to watch these 190 mile an hour billboards on wheels at Atlanta Motor Speedway. It costs upwards of $10 million to sponsor those cars. I promise you, big companies, big business, whether they land at the airport next to the racetrack or at Hartsfield-Jackson, will look at Clayton County. And they will decide, should they spend money? We've looked at this stuff for a couple of years. What's the result? Will we get a return on our capital if we invest it here? Hopefully, to move Clayton County forward, folks, we all have to be together on this. It has to be an "us" project. We have to take us and our desires seriously. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great afternoon. Bye-bye.
Larry Jackson.
Good afternoon. Larry Jackson, District Three, Riverdale, Georgia. I've only been in Clayton County a couple of years. And I want to call attention to the fact of the deplorable conditions that these Kroger stores in. They're awful. I've been in, I went on Tara Boulevard and on Highway 85, I've seen water coming down through the roofs. The refrigerated areas, no food in them because they're leaking. I think that if we notified the district manager Krobin and have him come down and walk through these stores, I think they could do a lot better. If you go through the stores, particularly up on Chaminet Tucker Road, they tore that completely store down and built a brand-new pristine store there. And I think they can do the same thing for Clayton County. One other concern is the parks and recreation. I think we need to develop more parks for these kids in the summertime. They don't have enough parks to get build basketball courts, I think, at some of these recreational centers. So they'll have, and small soccer fields. So they'll have something to do in the summertime. We need to develop these parks and recreation centers for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Ritz, Georgia. Open records request submitted for year-to-date total of attorney fees paid with our public funds for personal lawsuits filed in 2022 against both Alika Anderson and Felicia Franklin, not the county, for defamation of character. While I appreciate finance staff calling me to explain this county's invoicing and payment process and time required as a justification for charging me $100 to honor my request, it's unacceptable for this county to utilize and operate with such efficiencies, financial systems, and operations with our tax dollars for public funds, which leads to waste, fraud, mismanagement, misuse, and abuse. Tonight, I will submit a new open records request to legal to obtain the year-to-date summary from the respective law firms regarding our tax dollars. July 20th, I submitted two complaints directly to Attorney Reed against all SIT's Ethics Board members with two follow-ups in August. As of this speech, I have yet to receive acknowledgement and/or responses from Attorney Reed. As a result, I will go outside the county with my complaint. Also, another reason why the FY25 budget should have included pay cuts for all directors and chiefs excluding our first responders, which should have been to balance to our budget. Their performance is not worth the pay. The Sheriff's Office. Our tax dollars and property are not for rumpa room activities and clown shows. Lastly, Mr. Gooden's comments tonight. Citizens may want to review August 20th public comments regarding a certain citizen operating as the trash company mouthpiece. It appears they have teamed up with certain current and former commissioners to continue with their intimidation, suppressing our voices and our freedom of speech. Then again, only hurt dogs holler along with them not doing their due diligence. Thank you.
Jacqueline Edwards. Jacqueline Edwards, Ms. Edwards. Jacqueline Edwards. Sylvia Denise Wright.
Good evening, Chairman and the Board of Commissioners. First of all, Sylvia Dennis Ray from the Alzheimer's Services Center in Morrow. On behalf of our Board, I wanted to personally thank you all for everything that you do for the Alzheimer's Services Center. And with that being said, I wanted to, September is World Alzheimer's Awareness Month, and the Alzheimer's Services Center will be having two events here in Clayton County in honor of Alzheimer's Awareness Month. The first one is a screening of a documentary. I hope that you all can attend. It's on Friday, September 13th. The documentary talks about dementia in the African-American community. And then on Saturday, September 21st, we'll be having our Second Annual Alzheimer's Walk right here in Clayton County at the International Park in Jonesboro. So I hope that you all can attend and continue to give us your support. And lastly, I wanted to let you all know that we will be expanding our services. We're gonna reopen the Respite Area. And we will be, the center is licensed for a personal care home. So we're gonna be reopening it back up as a personal care home. I had the fire chief come out last week, and they're gonna do all the inspections. So preferably, we will have that open in October. So I just wanted to give you guys that information. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all that you and your staff is doing to keep that center open and operating efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chair, now is there approval of the consent agenda?
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Here or none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, beginning with item number 26.
All right, first board appointment is to Animal Control. Mila Chapman resigned from the Animal Control Board. The existing term expires on March 12th, 2026. This is a full board at-large appointment. Are there any recommendations? I'd like to recommend Dr. Eddie Gordon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Kathy Robinson's term on the Board of Zoning Appeals expired August 19th, 2024. New term is for three years, expiring on August 19th, 2027. This is a full board appointment at-large. Are there any recommendations? All right, just hold that, Madam Clerk. Next board appointment is to the Board of Health. Dr. Richard Wright was removed from Board of Health. The existing term will expire on December 31st, 2025. This is appointment by the Board of Commissioners to this position on the Board of Health. Are there any recommendations? I would like to recommend Dr. Demont Davis Jr. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hammerick. Are there any questions? Those in favor, I. Aye. Those opposed.
I gotta recuse myself for that. You already spoke to him?
No.
Just checking.
Okay. It's approved. It's one extension.
That's not me, by the way. That is not me.
We know you're not a doctor. We trust you. We know that. We know that. All right, next board appointment is the Zoning Advisory Group. Charlton Holloway's term on the Zoning Advisory Group expired on August 19th, 2024. New term is for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on August 19th, 2027. Are there any recommendations for board? I did reach out to him, was not able to contact, make contact with him.
I have a question. I don't think all of these are full board appointments.
Well, this.
I think they should be district.
No, there's, there's two that, there's actually three that are. The next appointment, Herman Turner's, is a chairman's.
Can we check with the clerk on that?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So item number 29, that is the only full board at-large for the zoning advisory group. Item number 30 is the BOC chair's appointment. And item number 31 is District Three, which would need to be held until further notice.
You're good?
As early as.
I'm looking at you. You don't want to ask the question. I just want to make sure you got it, got it, understanding.
Because I saw all of these boards, I mean, full board. I'm thinking, you know.
So can we hold item 23? Sorry, item 29 for the.
Well, there was no, that was gonna be, if nobody has a recommendation. Again, I did not reach this person. So it'd be my recommendation, hold till next meeting. All right, next board appointment is to the Zoning Advisory Group. Herman Turner's term on the Zoning Advisory Group expired on September 2nd, 2024. New term is for three years, beginning immediately and expire on September 2nd, 2027. The agenda does state full board, but this is actually a chairman's recommendation, and I recommend that we reappoint Herman Turner. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Last board appointment is Zoning Advisory Group, District Three, which is to the Zoning Advisory Group, expired on August 19th, 2024. Currently occupied by Mr. Dante Long. This is for three years, beginning immediately and expiring on August 19th, 2027. And this is the one that we said that we would ask to be held until further notice.
Right, but that person will continue to serve.
Until further notice. All right, Madam Clerk, you clear on that?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right, that concludes the agenda. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on litigation only.
All right, is that motion going to executive session for litigation only?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Second, the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It is unanimous. Everybody have a great evening. Madam Clerk, you ready?
Ready, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It is unanimous. Mr. Reed, take them together.
All right, the first is related to a incident, William Bohannon versus Sheriff Allen. And it's a sheriff of the county. It's related to injuries sustained or rising on a boost incarceration at the jail from January 13th, 2022 to January 20th, 2022. And that is in the amount of $12,500. The next is a settlement agreement between Nan that Win and Jackson Moore, the county. And this related to an automobile accident that occurred on November 21st, 2023. And that is in the amount of $23,750. And also requests that the Chief Financial Officer have authority to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense as required under these agreements. That's it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of either of the items? Here or none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Good evening.